Okay.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to thank employees too. I think they did an outstanding job and they did the greatest good for the most number of people. That doesn't mean everybody's gonna be happy, but I think they all did a fantastic job.
I agree, and I will say this. I know some people always anxious to get the road plowed, some of the distressed areas and everything, especially right after the snowfall. We have to look at our employee safety too, because even with that big equipment, you can lose control in a blink of the eye. So I appreciate their willingness to step forward in those emergency situations. All right. Josh Ward, our town manager, what is your report?
Well, I would like to start off with thanking our street crew. They started work plowing snow about midnight on Saturday night, worked all day through Sunday into Sunday night, went home and got a little bit of sleep and then have been there long hours each day. What the mayor said was true. It seemed like we were overwhelmed with requests. I know this was a larger snow than we've had in a while. Not out of the ordinary, it's just a larger snow that we've had in a while, and I think we have a lot of folks here that have not experienced a snow like this. We had a lot of requests from private developments to plow. And like the mayor said, we try to get to those areas when we're done with all the town streets. And, you know, it really took a long time to get finished with the town streets. And so we were late getting to some of those. Some of those private drives were just too unsafe to try to plow. We had to back away and go back in there. We've had a ton of calls in here in the office this week, people, even today. You know, people wanting their street plowed. So I think it is good to take some time and have the public works committee, you know, look at the, you know, the policy that we've had for Lamar said, you know, 30 years since before he got here of how we do, you know, snow plowing during these types of events and make sure that we've got a plan and make sure everybody understands that plan out there in the community. So, but I would like to definitely say thank you to those guys. And luckily, according to Lamar Nix, we didn't have any major damage to any of our trucks or equipment. So that's a miracle. So. Update on the fire department. Things were going really well until the snow this week. It's obviously slowed up. They're trying to finish up the tin on the roof. They have several layers of material that they were able to get on before the snow. Then the tin goes over it. They started on the back. They're about finished with the back and then they'll come into the front. The brick is nearing being finished. They had to do some waterproofing there, so it's moving along. So we're excited about that. Trash pickup. We've had a lot of questions about trash pickup. That will resume as soon as the streets are safe to get on out, especially out in the residential neighborhoods. The guys were out today picking up the commercial route as best they could. So just bear with us the rest of this week. Next week hopefully it'll be on normal schedule. The mayor mentioned hot wire. Hot wire has been in here. A large amount of their staff has been in here. They're trying to get the head end set up. They have got the connection into the head end. They're looking for an office space. They've looked at several spaces now, so hopefully they'll have an office soon. And that's something that as far as the altitude customers go, they're taking care of now. And then they'll be getting some more information out on the fiber connections a little bit later on the spring. One exciting piece of news is we got information on the ARP, the American Rescue Plan Act grants for sewer and water that are going to be submitted in the, you're going to be able to submit for them this spring. Actually, May 2nd is the deadline for those, and they're going to award those in August. We had, as you remember, we had Withers Ravenale do a number of preliminary engineering reports for us for those critical water needs that we've got, the pre-clarifier tank at the water treatment plant, which is a 1965 model, as well as Dog Mountain. The staff at Withers Ravenale will be applying for both of those projects for us individually. They have a funding person on staff that has worked with the state in the past. It will be scored, basically each project will be scored just like they have been scored in the past. Nothing has changed on that, so she's very familiar with that. She's actually doing a preliminary score for us right now. We've got her all the information that we had. We're definitely ahead of the game with the preliminary engineering reports and our water assessment plan and our comprehensive master plan that we did back in 19, I think it was, with W.K. Dixon. So those two pieces there are going to put us way ahead of the curve. She's very confident that both of them will be very good applications, so we'll see what happens there. You will see a resolution come before you in the next couple of months that has to be adopted in order to apply for these funds. So you'll be seeing that. Maybe February, maybe March is what she was saying. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
What about the finished water pump station? I thought we were gonna do that too, Josh.
Which one are you referring to, Mark?
The finished water pump station at the treatment, at the water treatment plant.
The, are you talking about the variable pumps at the water treatment plant? Yes, that is in the current budget. That is in the current budget. So that's being worked on now, actually.
Okay, all right. Very good. Our next item, the consent agenda. Do we have any questions concerning the consent agenda? I think you're muted, Brian.
Sorry about that. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Have a second. All right, very good. Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
Thank you. We have approval. Okay, the next item, number seven, mayor pro temp selection. We decided to actually vote on a mayor pro temp last year, so we have now the need for mayor pro temp. Do I have anyone that would like to nominate someone for consideration?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Buzz Dotson for the role as mayor pro temp.
Okay, and Commissioner, are you willing to serve?
I am.
Okay, all right. Let me go ahead and call a vote then.
Second motion.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and we have another motion. Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Pearson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye, congratulations.
Okay, and Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Dotson?
I'll abstain.
You vote, yes. Okay, thank you. He will be, Commissioner Dotson, I appreciate your willingness to serve in that capacity as mayor pro temp. Thank you very much. Item number eight, mid-year budget amendments. Rebecca Schuler, it is January, it is the mid-year. So Rebecca, you have the floor.
You have the budget amendments in front of you in the agenda packet. Typical is, you know, most every year. I don't know even where to start, so if somebody has a question, we'll just go with that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Amy.
If my first question is, is in the number two section there, the very first one, professional services of an increase of $50,000. I think that should be the subcategory should be 410410, not because it's not wages and salaries. Is that correct?
I don't have it in front of me, but I am assuming that you're correct because you usually know what you're doing. So let me, it may be a misprint. I'll have to look at it when I get back to the office.
Okay, I had, I had, I had a couple of other questions. The $29,000 in the fiber for salary and wages, is that because we didn't get hot wire in here as soon as we expected or what?
It's because Emily actually didn't post, didn't budget for that in the right department. So we didn't budget hardly anything in fiber because of hot wire. And so now we know when he's gone, he's gone actually as of January 1st, so.
Okay, that's what I thought it was just a. Yeah. We didn't know exactly what it was gonna be because we didn't know when hot wire was coming in. Okay, last, yeah, last question is the $41,000 in the capital outlay of the police. But if I look at the budget that you gave us, the budget report, we're $44,000 over in that line item.
Yes, it is not actually over. What happened is when we were doing some of the grant stuff, it was charged to the wrong line item. Gibby and I actually looked at this the other day because we were curious as well. The actual 41,000 amendment that we're actually doing, it's not over, like I said. But what the amendment we're doing is for a police car that was hit during the storm in total. And so if you saw on the disposals, there's a police car that we are disposing of with an insurance claim. So the insurance company will pay for some of it, but she has found a car in Pennsylvania that we have to act on fairly fast. So that 41,000 is replacement car, but there will also be insurance coming back in to help offset that cost.
So the 44,000 overage is something different in your.
Yes, it actually, part of it should have went into, I want to say it was maintenance and repair and it was, or equipment one, and it was for the tablets that she had gotten on one of the grants. And they weren't actually a capital because they were under 5,000 apiece. And we had actually budgeted them in the wrong line item, so when we did the encumbrance, it held it out of the wrong line item. So that will correct in the next couple of months once we get the invoice.
Okay, those are my only questions on the general fund one then.
Okay, and let me add to the police car. We'll try to salvage some of the radio and electronics as much as possible from the wreck car?
Yes, they've, yes, they've already went through it and they're trying to see what kind of insurance claim we'll get out of what was damaged and what was not will be salvaged. But we did get a quote on, I think pretty much all of it to get it back at the par.
And the good news was our officer was not injured.
No, thank goodness.
Yes.
A tree fell across the whole car. Could have been really bad.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question, follow-up question, Rebecca, regarding Amy's comment about the professional services legal on the 50,000. If you group that with the one that's down below it, which is the category, which I believe is correct, professional services legal, so are we saying it's a $60,000 increase?
One is in admin and one is in fiber. What happened is the money was charged to the wrong line item and that as well down there. It was actually charged to Matt's MISGIS line item instead of in the fiber. And that was Jim Baller's costs. And then the one in the admin is actually for, help me out, Van Winkle Justice for the planning. Sorry, I couldn't think of his name.
Okay.
So we're over on both, Buzz.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I move we have approved the general fund budget, mid-year budget amendments as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. Let me go ahead and call the question. Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Pearson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item, audit finding responses.
Wait, wait, wait. I had, that was just, that was just for, that was the general fund, not the electric fund budget amendment. And I had, right, I actually had a question on that too. You just need to remind me what CCR is.
It's the coal ash. And so what happened on that one is last year they actually billed the coal ash in with the regular bill altogether, where in the prior year they actually had it separated. So this year they separated it back out, so it just needs to go to the correct line item.
So it's just a change in line items is what you're doing.
Correct.
Yes, basically.
Okay, so I move we make the budget amendment in the electric fund, mid-year budget amendment as presented.
Okay, second. Second, very good. All right, let me call the question here. Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The next would be the audit finding responses, Rebecca Schuler. And this is the follow-up from the audit presentation. Gotta go off mute. You're muted.
You had, I'm good. I said I do not really want to read that whole thing out to you like you've got it, you can read. So we talked about it last month at the meeting. We had to respond to those two findings. And it's pretty self-explanatory. We actually have to do this every year. But you have to sign off on it this year, not just us. So anybody have any questions on those two?
I have a question. I'm kind of curious. This whole issue about the electric fund. Starings has been auditing us for many years and has been looking at that fund. Why did they cite that this year? That's kind of perplexing to me.
No, they really didn't cite it. It's not really a citation and that's, you need to understand that. It's really not a citation because we're not bound by that statute. That statute was for the, I think it's northeastern, I'm going off of memorization, but I think it's a northeastern association or something, and it's a certain amount of, yeah, and it's a certain number of towns that are actually under that. We're not under that. So it's more like a recommended good practice, I guess. The town's always funded everything out of that electric, the capital projects, and that's what I wrote in the response. I don't know if you read that response, you know, thorough, but I told them that we do use it for our capital projects and that we had planned on continuing, but that we would take it into consideration in the upcoming budget years.
Well, I guess I'm kind of giving a critique of the auditors that this comes up this year, but it hadn't in the past.
I think it's because of the changes at the LGC. They changed the way that the audit had to be done, like with this response from you guys. There were a few different changes that they, I'm thinking it's because of COVID and they have several municipalities across the state that have came into financial trouble. And the LGC has actually taken over a couple of their finance departments and are actually doing their finances for them. And so I think it's just to kind of make, I don't know if it's to make the board more aware or or what, but it's just because of the LGC changes.
Okay, Commissioner Patterson?
My questions were about the inventory one and your response to that. In the paragraph that starts, views of responsible officials and corrected, and plan corrective action. How many inventories have we done in the past and how many are you changing them to and who's doing them?
Okay, in the past, we've done this for maybe three years now, Josh?
Yes, three or four.
I'm thinking it's three or four years and we've only done one. They do one inventory a year right before the auditors come. And the water department does theirs and the electric department does theirs. I'm not sure how many, Josh, wanted to change it to. We had just decided that we would change it to more than one a year. And that if applicable, myself or somebody else in the finance department, Gibby or somebody else will go over and actually help count. I'm not sure that it has been totally.
Right now we count the one time, you know, before the audit. And I've talked to Lamar about at least doing it, you know, twice a year, if not quarterly, to try to keep up with a little bit better. Again, a lot of these things are bins full of small parts and pieces that are a little bit difficult to keep up with. But I feel like that if we do more counts through the year, hopefully we can keep up with it better. And that's another, that's another thing that, that we had just started four years ago, going back to the auditors. They had never mentioned it before and we started it four years ago because we knew that they did it in other places. And so they said, yes, we need to be doing it. We didn't know you had inventory. Well, you know, we've had inventory forever. So it's a new thing for, for the crews to try to do. They've, they've got a list of these items and the list has changed some, and I think the list also got confusing and they actually were not matching some of them up. So I think with a better list and more counts through the year, I think hopefully we can get a handle on that.
Okay, that's what I started to say. We, but. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rebecca. You may be.
I started to say that we, I did start to say that we are going to ask them as well to redo their lists so that they know what the items are, because right now it's like a three-quarter nipple or a, you know, a two-third connection, something another, and that's how it's listed. Well, they might know it as a disconnect or something else. So we've asked them to rewrite their lists as well so that it'll be a little bit more user-friendly as well.
Well, I guess that was what I was, if you're, if this is a response going to the LGC or is that who it's going to or the state somehow?
Yes.
That, which should be a little more detailed in that we do one inventory now and we allow, considering going quarterly or biennial, I mean semi-annually or, and we're redoing our list. To me, I think it needs a little more detail because to me, if I'm signing that thing, I have no idea if we're doing anything good, bad, or indifferent.
Okay.
And you're asking me to sign it.
Yeah, we do have to get you guys to sign it. So we can put that we're gonna do it twice a year or quarterly, whichever y'all decide, and direct the staff, you know, the guys to do it. And we can also put that we are making them redo. I thought it said that they were redoing their sheets.
Updating the inventory sheets. I guess I just didn't understand exactly what that meant, so that, or putting it, making them more consistent. Updating, it could mean a hundred, a lot of different things, but consistency of description or whatever it is. I'm just trying to make it look like we're actually responding instead of just doing this general blow it off. Oh, yeah, we'll just tell them we're gonna do this kind of thing and we're not actually gonna do it.
I will tell you the responses in the past are general. They always have been. Like I said, we actually do this every single year. It's just new that you guys have to sign off on it.
But I never had to sign off on them before.
No, 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 and I know that and we'll change it. We can change it for you. But, but that's just what I'm saying. They do accept it. That's not, it's not anything out of the ordinary is what I'm trying to say. Okay. Yeah.
So do you need a motion for us to approve this for you to send off?
Yes.
Yes. And you can make a motion of your changes too, and then I can do that.
I really think this is a good thing to do. We could spend more money on a formal work order system and more people, but it wouldn't be worth, it wouldn't be worth it. So I think this makes sense.
So I will move, I will move that we approve the responses to the audit questions with the minor amendments in the inventory category to be sent to the LGC.
Okay, Commissioner Hane, do you want a second there?
That's fine. We're gonna say twice a year. Do we need to specify, Rebecca?
We can specify twice a year. I think it'd probably be better to start with two, and if they keep getting it wrong still in the future, then go to four.
Second without amendment.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, let me call the question. Commissioner Steeler?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Peterson? Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you very much. Our next item, ARPA Grant Project Budget Ordinance, Josh Ward.
So the town of Highlands received half of the American Rescue Plan Act funds allocation in an amount of $156,480.45. The town will receive the second half of that later this year. The federal government has finally issued the instructions on how to proceed with spending of those funds. The first step is for the town board to adopt the attached Grant Project Budget Ordinance for a specific project. And after we look through the projects, we feel like reviewing the guidelines, the project that best meets the requirements would be the Moorewood Waterline Replacement Project that is in this year's current budget. And actually, that project is getting ready to start. Stillwell will be doing that for us. They're looking for all the materials as we speak. Hopefully they can gather those together and start that project soon. The recommendation is to adopt the attached Grant Project Budget Ordinance for the Moorewood Waterline Replacement. As you remember or may remember, that budget was $670,000 for that project. We're going to receive approximately $313,000, so that would leave about $357,000 for this project.
Any questions of Josh?
Josh, is the, is the remaining part in this fiscal year or this calendar year that we'll be receiving it?
It's supposed to be in this fiscal year. It's supposed to be somewhere around June. May or June is what we were told. Now, we might get it in July, but we were told that we would get it before the end of the fiscal year. Which would make it more cleaner, being that the project's being completed this fiscal year.
Right, that's what I was figuring on.
I'm going to approve the Grant Project Budget Ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Steeler. Okay, Commissioner Pearson, what is your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Thank you. Very good. Our next item, number 11, requesting croach into the right-of-way of Maple Street, Josh Ward.
So Mr. Robert Wright, owner of the home at 34 Maple Street, is requesting permission to construct a driveway gate and fence within the right-of-way of Maple Street. The request comes as a security measure to prevent pedestrian and bears from entering the property. The home was built on the edge of the right-of-way where the previous home was located. The front yard and driveway of the home is within the right-of-way, and there's an attached survey that describes that in your packet. Public Works Director Lamar Nix reviewed the request and recommended the driveway gate be installed away from Maple Street, enough to prevent a vehicle from protruding into the street when they're opening and closing the gate. Also, Mr. Nix recommends the fence to the side of the home, not enclose the utility pole or the guy wires. Attached is the revocable license agreement with Mr. Wright if the board so chooses to approve the request. And I think Mr. Wright is with us tonight if you have any questions for him.
So on the, on the survey plaque there, the red triangles, it said something about those were, but there's ones on the backside too. Are that something we need to worry about or?
The fence will basically enclose his property there. I don't know, the red triangles, I'm not aware of any issue with those. It's gonna have to meet the fence requirements. We've already talked to him about that. I don't know exactly what those red triangles are in the back. He could probably answer that again. He's supposed to be on with us.
Yes, I'm here, Josh. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Those triangles are where we're gonna put gates so that there will always be access at different areas along the fence.
Okay.
So it's the one, the red, you've got two red things on the, what looks like the driveway. And I, and I know Lamar talked about not putting the fence right there at the sidewalk so that we could a vehicle could pull off to get the gate open to the driveway. Is that the, so is the second red thing, this red square there in the driveway, is that where new is it gonna be or is that something different?
No, the red square is where the carport is and, and the right-of-way actually comes within, Josh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but about 10 feet from the carport, where the house was built, the right-of-way goes that close to the house. So I just put the carport there because that's where we're gonna bring the fence along that side there, if you see. But the. But the slash, the red slash by Maple Street is the gate and, and as Josh said, we would make sure that it was in, in a, a distance that you could pull a car off while you're opening or closing the gate, not protrude into Maple Street.
And, and Mr. Wright, let me just kind of um reinforce this. I think one of the reasons you want this fence, you're right downtown and you've had people who are just walking through town who want to walk through and around your house. Is that not correct?
That's correct. Uh, we've sent, uh, I, I do appreciate Josh, Michael and Chief Allen. They've been incredibly responsive. We've sent videos where we've had it, but I would say from um maybe August first to November first, seventeen different instances where people have come into our property, ranging from, we put a chain up on the driveway thinking that might help and people will step over the chain, walk in our driveway into our carport, look around, look into our windows and then leave. Uh, we've had people of one person come to the side of the house, relieve himself from the side of our house. Um, and so it's, it's, if you think about the last four or five months prior to the winter, uh sixteen, seventeen instances is a lot. Chief Holland's been excellent. We're trying to um, um, a- at some point try to get, get uh an officer out when it's happening, but it's difficult to do, but um, it's uh become obviously uncomfortable. Um, and we have the videos which uh, it's not to bore you guys with the videos, but, but Josh and Chief Holland have all the videos and uh, it's got, it's gotten out of hand, to be honest with you, and it's uh not, not comforting to us to have people peering in our windows, relieving themselves on the side of our house, stepping over our chain, stepping into our carport. I don't understand it. Uh, maybe I never will. Um, but in the meantime, I would like to just, it's not too sick, it's not to provide the security, but it's more of a boundary, if you will, uh, so that people can respect it.
Okay, thank you.
So Josh, I had a question about the, about the um fence or the railing that's along that sidewalk, along the um part that's um falls off there between there and um Oak Street. Uh, you know, in front of the EMS or across from the EMS, is that, who, who's railing, is that a railing because it's steep there to keep those side, people on the sidewalk from falling off? And who put that there?
It's the town's sidewalk and it's the town's railing and we actually had a, there's a small sliver there that's, that's on the other property, which we had an agreement with the, the um landowner there at the time. And so that's, that's definitely the town's sidewalk and railing to keep up with.
And it goes pretty close to that utility pole too.
Yes, it does. The utility pole is off down below that, probably four or five feet below. And there's a, a large number of guy wires that actually come off of that pole. So it's very busy down there. There's also a telephone box. So what Lamar said is, is it really needs to be all in or all out? That way, if we have to get down there to do anything, the fence is not in the way and we can get to it.
Well, I guess my question was is, is, is it, and, and Mr. Wright can, it can certainly weigh in on what his opinion is. Is it necessary to put the, the, the fence from that, I guess that's the southwest corner to that um, to the sidewalk there? Because I don't know that there's a whole lot of access there, but that would keep that fence from being in the way of, I mean, a couple of big trees and, and that utility pole there.
Yeah, I would just say, I would just say that it doesn't come out to the sidewalk. Um, I apologize for the drawing, but it doesn't come to the sidewalk it, because there's a three to four foot drop from the, uh, the previous owner, Frank Scudder, built, I would say about eight, eighteen or so evergreens. That might not be the proper term. But, but uh evergreens there. So it'd be behind the evergreens, but four feet below the sidewalk. Um, and I do think that um in fencing it in, if, if we're gonna fence it in, it would make sense to complete it there. And, and like I said, we would put a gate there. We, as Josh just said, we would make sure that the guy wires, utility poles are outside the fence. But if for some reason, someone needed to come into the property and access it from our property, they could do so through that gate there. But the gates will never be locked. Again, it's not security, it's boundary. Um, so I, I think it makes a lot of sense, Commissioner, to, to complete it. Um, but it's not to the sidewalk by any means. The, the evergreens are what's close to the sidewalk.
Right. So they would be on the property side, not the sidewalk side of the evergreens, the fence is what you're saying.
That's correct.
And it's gonna be six feet tall. I was just, I guess my, my thing was is trying to, to keep kind of a visual uh extension of the, of the railing that was already there. Would that be sufficient for you? But if it's behind the evergreens, it, it really doesn't matter because it, that visually is not gonna be in the way.
Yeah, I don't think from the street there would be any visual aspect to it because again, it's four feet or so below the street level. Um, and, and again, uh, the fence that uh we, we submitted is a, a black uh durafence, which I don't think would be visible at all, but from the, because you're gonna have the evergreens blocking it totally.
Yeah, it looked li- just a little bit prison-y to me.
I, I understand and, and, and I will tell you that when we first bought the home, that was never our, our idea. But I will tell you that having uh my wife and grandkids here and I, I don't like people walking in our property. And one or two, fine, but seventeen in three, four months is a lot.
I, I have no, I have no problem with that. I'm just wondering if it's just a barrier or not, a, you know, a necessary fence. That, that was my only thing is, the picture you've given us is pretty substantial.
I also think that if you, if you don't complete it, uh, you're gonna have other issues. So we're gonna do it. I like to just do it complete uh rather than parcel.
Okay.
I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Pearson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez, I'm Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. All right. Our next item, a request for reimbursement of printing costs. And I'll start this off. Um, Commissioner Hane has submitted um reimbursement calls for printing. The reason I bring this up is that over the years, we've had a, a printing, a paperless printing process that we've, we've had with the board members. Commissioner Hane feels like he needs to have um the documents printed and he submitted those reimbursements. And because that would be a deviation from our, you know, existing practice and policy, I wanted to bring it for the board and um get the board feedback and, and review and approval. Any questions? Or Mr. Hane, you might want to um, you know, weigh in on this too.
I'm entitled to privacy, but I provided the, Josh with a medical statement and uh, I'm entitled to reasonable accommodation. My preference would be the city print the documents, but I'm happy to be of, of help.
Okay.
Well, I think uh, one of the reasons that we went was not just to minimize staff time of all this printing, but I, basically um, I initiated it when I got an iPad because it saves a lot of trees, you know, we're environmentally conscious and conscientious and not trying to uh, use all the, the resources and all this, just reams and reams of paper. So it wasn't just a, a staff issue. It was in fact, we were trying to be, you know, more environmentally aware um and, and not print things out. I think if, if there's a, as a uh legitimate handicap that has a um reasonable accommodation, I don't think that's something that we can not do. But at the same time, I think if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, Ms. Commissioner Hane's already received an iPad from the town um from several hundred dollars. Um, and now this is, adds up to three hundred dollars. I, there's gotta be a, a cheaper way of doing this than two months' worth of, three hundred dollars' worth of, of uh, of, you know, printing.
That's, that's not correct. I never requested or took advantage of the town's offer for an iPad and I've
Okay, sorry, it was your own line.
This is actually quite a bit cheaper than, than that and it's in accordance with what the doctors uh stated is required. So it's your decision. It's a reasonable accommodations, a federal requirement, so.
Well, I'm not sure it's cheaper because this is three hundred dollars and that's for just a couple of months' worth of, of work. I think it would be cheaper if you printed it out yourself or the staff just printed one copy out because otherwise, I mean, geez.
I'd be pleased for the staff to print it, Amy. That's what I asked for in the first place.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, uh, exploring all options is, is, is that surely we can do this less expensively than um, three hundred dollars over a couple of months. Um, I mean, that, you can get a three thousand printed sheets for twenty bucks or something worth of paper. Um, and I don't think that we should be, be paying this amount. Surely there's some other way we can do this, Josh.
Josh, what's your feeling?
Well, the issue is, is Commissioner Hane is wanting every agenda packet. A lot of the agenda packets have maps, you know, colored copies, things like that. It's gonna take a while to actually put together. Some are larger than others and it's gonna take more staff time than, than just printing off, you know, ten pieces of paper. Uh, that's the only thing that, that I'm concerned about is that, you know, every request, we have to stop what we're doing and, and make those copies. And again, if it was ten pages just printed, just in a few minutes, it wouldn't be as much of an issue. But like these agenda packets, well, you're aware, there's no telling what might be in those, whether it be maps. Um, you know, pictures like we have tonight of fences and things like that. It's gonna take a while to put together size-wise and print-wise, so it, but we'll do whatever the board wants us to do.
What is this? Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
My feeling is, um, you know, I, I'm kind of sensitive to um staff time and having um an electronics copy sent to Commissioner Hane and then having it printed at a, of, an office place or, or printing is um a pretty efficient way of doing it, although it does cost possibly more money, but it's hard to, to calculate this staff time for.
Significantly more money though. To me, I, I mean, I don't know. I get an agenda package. I think I can just hit print and it'll print it.
Mark, I've got a question for you on the um, uh things that you have, the iPad that you have, uh, is, is it the, the larger version?
Uh, I appreciate your question. I provided a statement from a medical doctor. I'm not gonna go into my privacy matters, but there, there's a medical reason and I'm just asking for reasonable accommodation. You wouldn't understand it if you didn't have the problems I have. You had the problems I had, you'd understand. All I can do is provide a doctor's.
I'm, I'm not trying to, to, to delve into your, your medical issues. Um, my point is, I'm sitting here looking uh at, let's say, uh, the previous topic that we discussed, which is the uh, the fencing and the survey. And on a printed version, you're gonna have an eight by ten and that's gonna be it. And if you have this survey on an iPad, I just zoomed mine in at an extraordinary, uh, it would probably be sixteen by twenty size that you're, you're not gonna, it seems to me you're gonna be losing a lot by uh not having the availability to, to, uh, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to surmise what the uh, the issue may be, but it would seem to me maybe I am. It would seem to me that the, the, an iPad would provide you with the whatever it is that, that may be missing.
Would you be content with eight by ten maps, Mark, or would it turn into where you needed full blown?
The, the doctor has, has suggested that you print the documents. You, you would not understand the problem. You don't have the disease, so you wouldn't understand the problem.
I'm not asking about the disease, Mark. I'm simply saying to you, is an eight by ten map satisfactory to you?
Yes, I've got a magnifying glass upstairs when I need one. We're fine.
Okay. What's the board's decision? Do we want to direct the staff to print the, the packet or just simply um allocate money, allow um reimbursements for Mr. Hane?
Well, I, I have one more question uh for Commissioner Hane. Uh, are you going forward? Uh, despite what you've, you've already done here, uh, going forward, are you gonna be looking for every document uh that you might want that comes out of, of town hall? Are you gonna be looking for the, the uh agenda packets in full? I mean, what are we talking about here?
There have been times when the, after numerous requests, I was allowed to read the file and I didn't ask for copies of it. And there have been times when I've asked for copies, but they were not, they were not large numbers. So, yes, I want, in the past, for some reason, I was, I was allowed to get a printed copy, then it became an issue and now we're talking about it. Really, we should not even be talking about this. This is federal law, you know?
Well, I don't know whether it's federal law or not personally, so I'm, uh, you know, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. I'm just trying to decide what we're uh empowering or, or detailing the town uh staff to do in the future and, and how much it's gonna take and what it's gonna cost. Time-wise, paper-wise, you know, we, we've gone in a completely different direction to, as, as Amy said, to try to eliminate uh, a lot of the staffing issues and, and monetary issues and, and paper issues and, and getting back into this is, is uh
irreducible.
Yeah.
Um, what about allowing, just giving the paper copies of uh, um agendas and town board minutes?
And that was my question. You know, what, what are you looking for going forward?
The, the agenda packages and sometimes the financial reports are fake and sometimes they're not. I don't know whose problem that is. This time they're very good. But yes, I'd like to have the agenda package every month going forward. And I'd be happy for the town to print it.
And see, I think that, and, and Josh, maybe I'm wrong, but what I, what y'all sent me in an email, I open up in a, in a, in an app on my iPad and I can hit a print button and print every bit of it. I'm not sure why you can't do that at the staff level in the town as Gibby's sending it out. She prints one and Mark comes and picks it up.
We can do that.
I think that's feasible.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's, and at some point we could buy a, a, a printer. For three hundred bucks, you can buy a printer and it could be
Right, dedicated to that alone.
Okay, we'll, we'll have Gibby when, when the agenda goes out, she can just print one copy. Commissioner Hane can come by and pick it up. All right.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, next item, number thirteen, Redline Version Hotwire Contract, Commissioner Hane.
Yes, sir. I'd like to have a copy of the Redline Version of the Hotwire Contract.
Okay, and what, for what purpose?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, I, I don't know if you wanna get into this or not, but I've asked politely three times for documents related to the, to the broadband project.
And we have provided them for you.
But, but please let me finish. I asked three times. I wrote letters three times. I had to hire a lawyer, which has cost me over eleven hundred dollars three times to threaten the town manager. to threaten the town manager that we would sue him if he wouldn't, as custodian of the records, provide documents. I, you know, I never would have started this project. We're in the middle of it. I've found some things that are benefit to the town. I have a concern that I'd like to discuss in March for the benefit of the town and the town board, but I'd like to read the Redline version. I can go through the things I've found. I don't want this meeting to go over, but I'm just trying to make things better and I'd.
Okay, let me, let me just say this. Those Redline documents, which were exchanged between attorneys, one could go back and almost come up with anything that, that has been written. But here's the thing. I don't have a copy. I've never seen a copy of those. They were between the attorneys. Um, I suspect no other town board member has seen those or have a copy. And I would even ask the staff what their situation is with that Redline document.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a Redline copy of this.
I know Jay doesn't have.
Now Attorney Jay Coward is, is here.
I, I don't have a Redline copy either. Um, I did do some research about it and one of the school of government um, professors is um, Freda Bluestein, and she's written a blog about it. And uh, basically this is what's called a trans history document. Uh, it's not a public record. It has to be kept. Uh, specifically notes, red line drafts uh, can be thrown away. They don't have to be kept and made a public record. So uh, if I kept every Redline document I had, I know I'd have to rent a warehouse to keep them, but I threw all mine away too. And, and I think that at least that one school of government professor uh, thinks that we don't need to keep them uh, and we can get rid of them. They're not public documents. So and that's what I did without even looking it up. I just looked it up a couple of weeks ago. I always throw mine away.
But I, I appreciate your opinion. I talked to another attorney. His opinion is, it is a public document.
Well, I just suggest that he might go to the uh, school of government UNC website, go into topics, go into public records, find her blog and see what she says and he may.
And let me ask you this, Mark. Do you, do you think the attorneys that were doing this have done something illegal? Malfeasance or, or what? That you need to see the documents that they were exchanging before we got the formal and final draft contract?
So there are a couple of concerns I have. I think it best discussed at the budget workshop and I'd like to read the Redline version. But I've found other things.
We don't have the Redline versions. Maybe.
Do we know the other lawyers don't have it or the staff?
Well, maybe they do and, and that would be their decision as to whether they want you to see it or not. It's not a public document.
Well, I've, does Rebecca have it?
No.
No.
Rebecca had the hot wire.
And Mr. Hayne, I, I don't have it either. We were trained at public records of, in public records training in our chief information officer class to delete all of those uh, drafts once their, their usefulness was gone and to also, as soon as there's a unanimous vote or a, an affirmative vote, to delete all the others uh, for that purpose. We were told specifically to, to delete those things uh, on each contract so that there would be no confusion on a contract once it was all voted for. So I, I don't have it either.
I have the hot wire Redline version in my office here. You know, I got it from the town staff. And I'm, all I'm asking for is the hot wire Redline version. And we'll discuss it.
You have the what version?
I have the Redline version of the wide open contract.
Oh, okay.
I have it. And uh, I asked if I could, if I should have it and it was told it was a public document.
Let me just bring one other thing up. We, we, we voted to approve that contract. I've signed it. You voted for it. Are you now saying that we need to go back and, and change the contract or renegotiate it?
You misunderstood. I said the wide open contract. I have the Redline version of the wide open.
I understand that, but the hot wire, I'm, I'm saying that we, we've approved that contract. Are you saying we need to, based on your investigation and analysis of, of, of potential Redline document that we need to go back and, and renegotiate it or change?
I'm not saying there, I'm not saying that at all. Now, I did ask for uh, us to define the insurance requirements. When we did the specs, uh, Matt argued against it. Nobody agreed with me and now we don't have a performance bond on a $10.2 million contract.
That is correct and we discussed that, Mark.
Yes, sir. That's, that's a mistake.
And, and, and you, you have that opinion and the other members of the board do not and that was done. Yes, and, yes indeed.
Can we discuss the fiber project in March during the budget workshop?
Yes, we will.
Great. I have a concern I'd like to talk about.
Okay, that'll be great.
I'll see if I can find a, a legal opinion, Jay, that says it's a public document. That's what I've been told. And I appreciate your opinion.
Okay. Any further comment?
Mayor, you know, I've found other mistakes. They didn't want me to read the documents and I've found other mistakes with the project.
Um, yes, and I will tell you this too. When we gave you those documents, you were insisting that we produce other documents that we did not have and we would not create them for you because they do not exist. In this particular case, we do not have the Redline documents or the Hotwire contract. If the Hotwire people or if our attorneys that we hired wanted to provide that, that's something that's outside our purview, in my opinion. Okay, any other comments? And by the way, let me just say this one other thing, Mr. Hayne. I know you think that um, we've missed things in this whole process and you have also at times even said that we don't really come far straight forward with it. Um, I do not agree with that. It has been a long, hard process of seven years, but we have a contract with Hotwire that will operate that fiber optic network and it will benefit financially the town in the long term of that lease. So that's my position on it.
Well, just as one example, when, when I read the documents, you know, I noted that we could refund the loan uh, with Truist and it could be refunded as taxable or non-taxable. And based on my work experience and a large water user, I knew when it switched from multiple to one, that we should make it taxable. And I used my work experience to try to benefit the town. Actually, we got a lower rate. Josh said it was a question, but we made it the refunding taxable. We got a lower rate. All I'm trying to do is take advantage of my work experience, help the town islands.
We appreciate that and we'll um, be attentive to any other suggestions you have. All right, do I have any further business before the board or do I have a movement, a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Second.
Um, all in favor, please raise your hand and we will adjourn. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.